Good evening, everyone. It's on the top of the hour and since it's six o'clock, we will let start on time since all of you are here. There's no reason for us to wait. So, thank you all for being here for tonight's School Board District of Ashland School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Kate Miller and I am the current president of the League of Women Voters of Ashland and Mayfield County. We're a nonpartisan political organization whose main objective is to promote political responsibility, to inform and active participation in all government at all levels, especially local. The League is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, and always working on vital issues of concern to members and the public. This candidate forum is but one example of the important work that the League does. I want to thank the candidates for being here tonight. Running in office is an important part of our democracy. It's a huge commitment. Thank you very much for doing your part. I'd like to introduce Linda Jorgensen. She is going to be our moderator. I want to thank her as well as the other volunteers that are here tonight, working on the forum. And Linda was chosen because she does not live in the school. And therefore, she can't vote in this election. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out on this whole night. This is important work that is going on in our Jeffreys community and thank you for making the effort to attend to me. Tonight, we will have the opportunity to assess the candidates running for the at-large school board position in the upcoming February 18th primary election. So the candidates present for this position this evening are the following: Teresa Curtis. Just give a little highlight. George Bouset. Jennifer Mavini. James Martinson. And Kelly Shaq. Our other League volunteers for this evening are Linda Calhoun and Diane Cootson. And they are taking questions and trying to aggregate them so that we can answer as many of them as possible in our behalf of the board. Ted Briggs is going to have time. And we have three League members who are graciously going all around the audience, collecting your cards at any time. So if a question occurs to you and you write it down, put it on your card, wave a little, and they will come and pick up your card, bring them to the card sorters, and they will get them to me. We are also very pleased that we've received some questions from Ashland High School students. Some have been combined, so pretty maybe differ from their questions, but we may not be able to get to all of them tonight. So this is the app we're going to follow. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. The timekeeper is going to be holding up a 30-second warning sign to you, followed by a times-up sign at the end of your allotted time. So they'll be keeping you on track. The candidate must complete their sentence and then allow the next candidate to speak. And I will interrupt you if the candidate continues and speaks on. During the forum, written questions will be received from the audience. You can direct your questions to the candidates individually or in general. If a question is for a specific candidate, please write that on the card. If you need additional cards or pens, please raise your hand and a volunteer will come and help you. We have also online. So we know there are online participants, and they can send questions during this forum, and they'll be received on this computer. And if you want to send a question, here is your email address. ashlandschoolboardforum, lowercase altogether, at abcleavoters, lowercase, dot org. Written questions will be collected and given to our question sorters. Questions are not altered, but they may be combined for duplication, and defamatory ones will be eliminated. So I will state the question to each of you, and you will have one minute to respond. And candidates will take turns going first unless a question is directed particularly to you. In that case, I may call on that candidate to answer the question first and skip over. And then offer the other candidates an opportunity to also answer the question. Candidates will have the privilege of answering a question not specifically directed to them, but you also can just say pass. Just don't want to answer that question. After each candidate has had an opportunity to answer each question, each candidate will have one minute to offer a rebuttal comment if they wish. At the end of the question and answer period, each candidate will make a one-minute closing statement. So please hold your applause every event. It will make it all go a lot smoother. And now, let's hear from our candidates and begin the opening statements. So the first person we are going to hear from today will be Teresa Curtis.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Teresa Curtis. I have lived in and loved Ashland for the last five years. I currently work as a manager of data and analytics. I have six years of experience working in data analytics with a background in accounting. Numbers tell a story, one which I think is useful to the school board. I believe it is important to be involved in local schools, even if, like me, you do not currently have children in the district. I believe the most urgent issue our school district is currently facing is the funding issue. The referendum that will be on the ballot for April is vital to our school's future and needs all of the advocacy and support that it can get. Teachers are extremely important assets in the community. They are truly shaping the next generation of our city, and I appreciate them for their patience, diligence, and their kindness. I do not know how we, as a community, can expect the district to fill and retain open positions while we offer salaries lower than the average of the state and lower than our surrounding school districts. Student wellness is also an item that I believe needs more focus. This includes physical health, safety, and, most importantly, mental health. My intention is to always advocate for what is best for the students. My husband and I plan to one day have children in the district, and like any parent would, we want to have confidence that we are sending our kids to a space where they are safe and they know that they belong. As mentioned before, numbers tell a story. We have a lot of data available to us from the school and from the state of Wisconsin. I believe that using it to make database decisions can help us as a school succeed for years to come. Thank you.
Second candidate, speaker George Bouset.
Before I begin my opening statement, I think you should be aware that I am actually a member of League of Women Voters. But being a fellow, I refer to it as a League of Well-Enshored Voters, and hopefully this helps fulfill that mission. But for my opening statement, I would like to say good evening. It's really nice to see you all here, and it's good to be here with my fellow candidate. I'll start by, on you, why I'm here. My childhood, elementary, school education was provided to me by the public, public school system in Phillips, Wisconsin, a short 75 miles from Ashland down Highway 113, Highway 13. My high school education was provided to me by the public school system right here in Ashland. That makes me a more doctor alike. My college education, primarily in math, languages, and the sciences, was also provided by the good people of Wisconsin at the University in Madison. My master's degree in administration and finance was also, once again, in Madison, provided by our great public institution, the University of Wisconsin. My nursing degree and associated massage therapy certificate degree were also provided by our public education system right here next door at Northwood Tech. So it is time for me to give back. To paraphrase John F. Kennedy, after whom we've named our airport, ask not what your community can do for you, ask what you can do for your community. Thank you.
And the next candidate to speak to us is Jennifer Mavini.
Hi. It's great to see everyone here. I'm happy to be here. I'm glad we have so many candidates that are running. I worked as a third-grade teacher at LSC in Ashland School District for multiple years, and I am currently the librarian in Bad River. So I have a lot of familiarity with both communities. I also have an 11-year-old son that's in the Ashland School District. And I have board experience. I'm the board liaison for the Schumigan Food Co-op. And I also have experience in tutoring and mentoring high school students across the country. And I am really strongly in support of encouraging students to feel that they belong, to address bullying issues, and to address issues that our teachers are facing, whether that's compensation or HR stuff or anything like that. I want to be there to support all the teachers, the students, and the families. I also support the upcoming referendum. I believe that we need this money to encourage more teachers and to provide materials that are necessary for the education of our students. And I am a great listener. I want to hear what everyone has to say, and I want to help serve the community in the best way that I can.
Thank you. Next candidate is James Martinson.
Hi, I'm James. Thanks, please, for putting us on. Appreciate that, even though it is a little stressful to be talking in front of whoever online there. But thanks for the opportunity. Yeah. So I guess I was born, raised in Ashland. Parents were born, raised in Ashland. Grandparents were born and raised in Ashland. Whether it's Martinsons or the Gatchens, that's my side. I think we're pretty well-known. A hard-working family that was taught to me from, you know, multiple generations down. A crowd of the education I got in Ashland at the high school. Secondary education, I graduated from the University of Minnesota de Booth. It was just, you know, a good school that was supposed to hold all my gift home on vacation weekends. I still maintain the relationships that I had here. Friends, so forth. I work locally here at Human Resources Director for the clearing. There's a lot of, a lot of benefit of, you know, being thoughtful, understanding the diversity locally, as well as a lot of the benefits. You know, I think it's important to be able to have integrity across each other. I believe a lot of people try to do the right thing. There's always just a different way to sound in general. But in any case, I have a two-year-old, a four-year-old, a six-year-old. We are in the district now. Two of them are at Marengo. We liked to tune in a week for the early on. Ashland didn't have, so we shipped out there. But again, thanks for the opportunity here. I'm here to add.
And our final candidate is Kelly Shaq.
Who's your candidate? Yeah, well, seriously, we additionally have. And, you know, there's, I was thinking about how I was going to introduce myself tonight. Do not, and I'm just waiting to that. But I am wanting to focus too much on that because there are only two minutes left. So with my experience as an educator, I'm experienced with lots of, a lot of sensitive and cultural topics that I think is probably, I think, happens. Language. And we named it the only, uh, striving for everything. It makes all of that. And it's that much as a patch. It's hard for anyone, really, to feel like they're experiencing ammunition as opposed to excellence. And I saw that recently at board meeting. That was about that, bringing about elementary. Taking that into consideration, I feel that if I were to be a board member, that I would be able to help people, be able to articulate what it is that they need to say in the best way possible, which means for the district. Again, as, as an education professional, not just as a teacher, but as a consultant and helping to the strengths to what it is that they try to do, which is that.
Thank you. First question is for all of you, and I'm going to start with you. In order of importance, what are your three top issues facing the Ashland School District? And what suggestions would you put forward to solve?
Thank you. Top three issues that I think we are having in our district is one.
You all speak up, please, so that we can make sure.
Yes, sorry.
Because you do not have a microphone.
Number one, like I mentioned, is the current funding issue. Obviously, our hope is that the referendum will pass. If not, we will have to take a closer look at the budget. And as somebody with a background in accounting, that's very important to me. I don't currently have much budget information for Ashland. It's a little difficult to find on the website, but it is something that I think is very important to look at. Number two is the well-being of the students, especially their mental health. I understand that it's a small town, and there's not always a lot of resources. But with everything that's happened in the last five years, I think it's always very important to focus on this, whether it is by offering more supports where we can or making sure that students know it's available. And number three, I would say, is the bullying issue, but I will end there because I have enough time.
Top three: funding.
And what are your suggestions on to solve?
Funding, excellence, and curiosity. Funding, because we're likely to lose funding, and we're short now in supporting the excellence of our schools. Excellence, because if we focus on excellence, it has to be a really high focus because that makes people want to have their children in our schools, and it makes our children want to be there and not be unhappy about being there. And curiosity, because we are a multicultural community, and that is an opportunity. Could not be a problem. Our kids are growing up in a multicultural world, and we have the opportunity for them to learn, be curious about differences, not to be defensive about it.
Thank you.
What I think are the top three, focusing on bullying and a sense of belonging for students. So that, I think that includes continuing to develop the social and emotional learning that happens in our schools, and also fostering a better relationship with members of the Bad River community. I also think another issue is the budget and being transparent about the budget and the issues we're facing, and how to increase our budget or come up with creative solutions if we don't get the funding from the referendum. And then third issue would be teacher retention and supporting our teachers. And I think that includes transparency, more streamlined communication, and more invitations for them to be present in speaking up and telling us what they need.
Thank you.
And the top three issues, I think, number one, our test him scores. I think they don't, not where they need to be. They have consumed some commitments, like to continue to go about that. Again, referendum budgets, it's, my thought, viewpoint has always been, hope for the best, prepare for the worst. So again, if you know that, in my head, I'm thinking, what can we do as a board to collectively figure out the next steps of the event where it probably goes past? Finally, again, just being in, trying to be in the roots of district and meeting the kids' needs. And, and again, that's one board member isn't going to be able to fix anything. It's a collective effort between all board members. Right? That's that. So again, that's, again, working with other board members to try to figure out what's best for the district, the best for the kids.
So number one, bullying. I think that some solutions would, endorsement, accountability, looking at what's working. Air number, for a change, skyward, steps it takes to actually write down an incident, how much time you have to date, rest, and as. So I have to say, absolutely, the budget, transparency. With what's going on currently in the world, especially, yeah, it's even more important that at the local level, that we have some guidelines, policies to protect all of our students with that bit of policy.
Thank you very much. Oh, my second question, that is to all of you. What skills will you contribute to the school board team? And I'll start with you, George Bouset.
Well, skills come from experience. So my training and experience is primarily focused in finance and then in therapeutic care. So I think it just brings a different perspective. I think it's useful for a board of different people from different backgrounds, with different perspectives. And so the perspective I come with is one of a lot of international experience. I was in high school, one of the first foreign exchange students to leave Ashland and spend a period in Germany and Gabon. So those are important things to me.
So a big one for me is creative problem solving. I'm a very creative person, and I love working to figure things out. And I bring that to every single thing that I do, in my family, at work, and anything else. I also have experience as an educator and working with DPI as well, and I have as a board liaison for the co-op. And working with adults and children on reading and literacy. I also feel I'm a unifier. I want to work with the board and the community, not against certain members. And I'm raising two children, so I have a lot of experience with children as well.
Hey, James Martin.
I, I guess I bring could bring to the board a lot of private employment experience. Been working for Northern Clearing for the last 15 years, from safety to human resources to project management. And I am comfortable having difficult conversations, even though at times they've been made just faceful. Trying to find common ground, work together as a team. All of those are vital in just about every aspect of life. So again, getting things done while showing respect to all the resources of other board members. And again, finding common ground and seeing if you can agree on, disagree on, but sort of whole, in the night, the one that, hey, I feel good about where I'm at, or be, I guess, sorry, like, feelings as well. Hopefully, that's.
Thank you. Kelly.
It's just a second. There's been a week of events, people wanted to carry you on Zoom.
Oh, you got louder? Oh, yeah. Hi there. So I bring technology. And you couple that with the education background that I have on top of having lived in the Southwest. I've been living up here since 2020, being a indigenous woman, and being able to network with many groups of people. I can sit and talk to any of you in here, any person that's online right now. And I'm not unable to make connections. And I think that's a big piece that's really needed for the school district right now. It's so easy to feel divided, unconnected, and with everything that's going on, we need to bring that connectivity to us.
And finally, Teresa Curtis, what skills will you?
I think the main skill is what I do for a living, which is data analytics, which means that I work on finding the right questions to ask, and then I work on gathering the information for that, whether it supports it or doesn't, which involves, you know, multiple sources, cleaning data so that it all makes sense and can be used, and then, you know, using that data to then figure out the answer. And that we can use that to make our decisions and work towards what we want as a district. I also do have a master's in accounting, and while I haven't worked in accounting for the last six years, it's still a very helpful skill. I'm very numbers-minded, especially when it comes to accounting and budget matters. And I think those are the two main skills that I bring.
Thank you all very much. I have some questions here on bullying. And I'm going to try to combine a number of them here, so I hope that they will be representative of the numbers of questions that have come in, issued. So I'll start with you, Jennifer Mavini. And how do you plan to end bullying, hate speech, and kids being And how do you plan to end bullying, hate speech, and kids being mean?
Um, well, I first want to say that I have seen a lot of these things happen in our schools. As an educator and as a parent. Um, and I think one of the biggest things, and Kelly mentioned this, is accountability.
Um, I feel that there are a lot of procedures that we go through that are pretty lax. And that's, we are not maybe addressing the root of the issue. And providing students with the information they need to come forward if they're experiencing bullying or seeing bullying. To feel safe doing so, and also to have measures in place that are really going to address the problem, whether that means more things to do with home life or in the school itself. And what we can do to, um, really enforce that we are an anti-bullying district.
Thank you, and James Parkinson, would you?
So that's a great question, also very challenging questions at the same time. Bullying situations, uh, throughout my career. And it's never a one size fits all problem, solution. Again, you gotta look at each individual case separately, what are the contributing factors, what's the cause? How do we get to this point? And then also, you know, I think it's important to see, you know, what kind of, how the families evolve, you know, what's the home life? What are the, um, other factors that, that all play into this thing? Uh, so again, it's a good question, it's a difficult question. And I just, I think a lot of it starts at home. You know, you gotta teach your kids, learn how to write, respect each other, respect your friends. And, and we'll first stop to it when we see it, because again, you're gonna see it throughout their lives and through life, so dealing with it is, and helping counteract it.
We definitely can't get rid of that, bullying in society, right? So when we have students attending any school in the district, it's our responsibility to make sure that they are safe, right? And if we're unable to do that, we're not doing the job. I think a lot of what you said, James, I agree with that. At the end of the day, we can't go into the homes of our students. And, yeah, they come to our schools and they're expected to be safe and it's just not happening. So I think you have to take full systems audit. You have to look at the teachers, you have to make sure everyone's on board with what that looks like. What are the steps that we're gonna take when we see it? And making sure that everyone is on board with it. I remember when I was teaching here, there were a lot of instances where a lot of bullying was underreported and just not reported at all. So, you know, there's a teacher aspect. Students, just making sure that they understand the accountability aspect for themselves. And that, you know, if you're gonna report this kid, it's gonna happen for any other kid that violates or goes against him. So, just some things to kind of take into consideration is that you can't control what happens outside the home. But everything that happens within the district, right, there's that little social contract that we're free to, the handbook, we need to stick to it. If it's not working, then we need to review it and make some changes.
Thank you, I'm going to go now to, um, Teresa Curtis and then, um, George Hussein to answer the same question. How do you plan to end bullying, hate speech, and kids being mean? But I have a request again, because we do not have microphones, that if you could speak as loudly as loudly and probably here, um, we, um, people who are trying to hear online.
To the last person in the room.
So, I mean, if necessary, feel like yelling, but that'll help people online hear you.
Well, if, if it helps to stand up when you're speaking, that might, you know, open up your diaphragm and let the voice come out.
Um, thank you, um, I think this is a really challenging question, because the landscape of bullying has changed so much, even in just the last ten years. There's a lot of new, there's a lot of new
Access to different things that weren't available. Um, and so I agree with my fellow candidates, is that the accountability is also really important, but so is consistency. Um, which I think is a really good key word to use here, because that's how we're gonna build trust where issues do get reported. Is that the students can trust that they will be handled, but they can also trust that if they do something that constitutes bullying, it will also be a consequence on them.
Yes, Lucy.
Ah, well, you know, there's the idea that, uh, a problem is a symptom of an opportunity. And, uh, this starts at very early years, of course. And so I think the system's actually making quite a significant effort to deal with this problem. But the children must understand mutual respect right from the beginning, and they work through the school system. And the key, in my view, is curiosity. Children need to be taught, very early on, to be curious about one another, to be curious about people who are different from them. To see difference as an opportunity, not as a problem, not as a defense, but something to take advantage of. And I think we probably could do a better job of helping the children of different backgrounds in our community get to know
Would it help if we, like, tipped our tables?
I think you're good now. Okay, you're okay.
I'll just help raise your voices in there.
We're just bringing closer
Okay, I got another tough question here. Um, how will you support the rights of your transgender students? And the first answer this time is James Parkinson.
Well, I, again, human resources background, I believe everybody has a right and a choice to, you know, uh, live how they wanna live, um, in, in any aspect, and I believe the school system, again, should be a safe place for everybody to come, feel comfortable. Uh, get an education, uh, nobody should be treated differently.
Okay, um, and your response, um, Kelly Shaggy.
It doesn't take a whole lot to learn how to be an ally. To learn the right, the correct pronouns that are provided. And it definitely is, is not gonna hurt anyone whatsoever. I think that with a lot of families who are not accustomed to, are not being raised in a household that's educated about transgendered individuals, if, you know, all these acronyms are for it. It just takes patience, respect. Right, just to go ahead and learn how to accept other people who are different around you. Every day, a lot of people who do identify as being transgendered or anywhere on the gender spectrum, they go about educating themselves and learning how to treat their peers around them. I think it's just a matter of doing the same for them. At the end of the day, it's just being respectful, and if you don't know how to be, learn how to be an ally, at least, and you'll end up learning how to be respectful.
Thank you, um, and I'll go over to you, Teresa, and, uh, have you answered the same question, how will you support the rights of transgender students?
Uh, well, transgender student rights are human rights, so I don't think that they should ever be treated any differently than a normal child in the school district. Uh, I think there is a lot to say for educating, um, students on how to do their own research. Um, especially if it's not something that we are able to teach in the schools. Or their parents are not comfortable for them to learn in the schools, because there is a lot to be said, like George mentioned, about curiosity and learning. Um, and how that can open up your worldview. Thank you.
Well, I would say that, you know, respecting differences in others is not promoting them or endorsing them, it's understanding them and giving them mutual respect. So it comes down for the children to learn at a very early age, if they pass up through the grades, to have mutual respect for one another, regardless of their differences, and to see those differences as an opportunity, not a problem.
Yeah, Jennifer Mobley. Um, first and foremost, uh, everyone belongs in our schools. Um, there isn't one person that doesn't, um, no matter race, gender, anything. Um, I feel strongly about using people's pronouns and names that they want to have used. Um, and making the school, the schools a safe place for everyone. Making sure teachers and staff and students are aware of, um, any bullying issues. And, um, giving more opportunities for knowledge, making sure we are including inclusive material in our libraries. Um, and with school counselors, um, or administration, making sure that they have access to tools and ways to communicate if, um, transgender bullying is happening. Um, and making sure that as a board, we are supporting at every level to make sure that all transgender students feel that they belong in our
Thank you very much, I'll have a final follow-up question here on bullying. And I'm going to, um, have the person who starts this be, um, Kelly Shaggy. And the question is, the federal government is working to stamp out diversity and inclusion. What would be your response if the federal government challenged this school district?
Oh, okay. So, regardless of what's happening at the federal level, we still have the state level and we still have our local level. And at the local level presently, if everything regarding DEI is not an issue from the community, and I say this like collectively, because if there were issues, there probably would be much more involvement at our board meetings to change policies, guidelines, et cetera, right? So, if anything at the federal level were to challenge our students, at the end of the day, if we were to allow that to happen, we're allowing the federal government to change the safety that we're in charge of, for our own community. So if we're willing to allow that change, we're willing to allow everything that happens afterwards. And if we're not okay with that, and we're about keeping our kids safe, then I feel that people will make and do the right decisions.
Going to you, um, Teresa Curtis, how would you, um, respond? Um, if the federal government challenged the, uh, district in its, um, inclusion and diversity?
I think, um, the most important part of those is that, that they help have a good representation of the people that are in our community. And if that is something that we are challenged on, I would hope that as a community, we would understand that we aren't solely hiring based on DER, and that we are actually using the people that are most qualified for what they are doing. Because that is the whole point. And if those people are drivers, then that is not our problem, that is just our benefit.
I would say that if you achieve mutual respect and you hire people for the qualifications, you achieve the goals of these programs. The issue seems to be that some folks see these programs as affirmative action type efforts. And this country's been divided on the issue of affirmative action for decades. I do think we have to listen to the community, the role of the board is policy, accountability, not management. And the policies that I've read through of this board are actually quite good. So it is up to the management to make sure that those policies are working and come to the board if they find that there's a deficiency.
And your response, Jennifer Mobley.
Um, I think that DEI has really been a villainized term, but it just stands for diversity, equity, and inclusion, which are all things that we, uh, want for ourselves generally. Um, diversity exists, we live in a diverse community, and so we invite diverse citizens to interact in our community, come to our schools, work for our schools. Um, that's just how it is. Um, everyone should feel they have access to equitable resources to, um, if we're talking about students, that they have access to the classes that they want to participate in and the knowledge they want to gain. That, um, incoming, um, hirees have, um, a fair process. Um, and everyone should feel included, belonging is one of the district's, uh, big terms, and it applies to everyone. It applies to the students and staff, um, and I would hope to the board as well. But, uh, above all, we support our staff, our students, and our community in every way.
And then finally, uh, James Parkinson. Yeah, uh, the federal government is working to stamp out diversity and inclusion. What would be your response if the federal government challenged the Ashland School District?
Well, I, again, that's kind of a possible question to answer, because there's so many factors that could come into you know, what the federal government's trying to get their, you know, hands in or try to influence a local school board to do or a school district to do. At the end of the day, I, I do believe that, you know, if, if we look at hiring teachers, the, the best person for the job should get it. It shouldn't matter if, you know, what background you come from, whether you're out of state, in-state, um, any, anything. You know, just strictly the, the right fit for the, for the job. And that's something that, again, not really the board's decision on, on hiring people, other than superintendent, I believe. But, uh, you know, again, as a board member, I just support and work with the, the district and the district team to ensure that, you know, they're hiring the best people for the job.
Thank you.
Well, my follow-up specific question on that is, um, does our district have an issue with segregation in regards to the Marengo Valley Elementary School? How would you address this issue? Um, does it add an us versus them motif mentality? And I'll start with you, um, Teresa Curtis.
Uh, this is a very complicated question, uh. I think that many districts, um, outside of Ashland, do have multiple elementary schools that all come together in middle school. Um, while we have the two, I can see how the combining of two communities in that way may seem hard for children to adjust to. I, I will honestly speak on the fact that I am not very familiar with any issues between the two schools, but that is because I do not currently have children in the elementary schools. Um, so I am going to end my response there.
Right, I'd like to say that, you know, we are one school. We are one four K through twelve school, we have some separated facilities, but we are one school. And there are differences of, of, uh, different parts of the, of the community. And we should be taking advantage of this. And it comes back down to the question of young people learning to be curious and interact with people who are different from them. So I'll just give you one short brainstorm. It occurred to me after visiting Marengo Valley School about a week ago, that just perhaps, just perhaps, there could be an exchange program where, say, a third grade teacher would take her class or his class down to Lake Superior Elementary for the week. And the Lake Superior Elementary third grade teacher would take their class And the Lake Superior Elementary third grade teacher would take their class up to Marengo Valley for a week. So for one week, that class of kids would be interacting with the other school. So it'd be two extra bus trips, they would go to the regular schools and they would get bused to the opposite school, beginning of the day, end of the day, and maybe they get to know each other better.
Thank you. Um, and Jennifer Mabidi?
Um, so when I worked, um, as a teacher, I worked with several teachers from MBS. Um, and I saw, in my opinion, more unifying factors than there were segregating factors. And so I think just like how, uh, we are constantly working on integrating those that live in Ashland, those that live in Bad River, we are also integrating those that live in Marengo and surrounding areas and those that live here. And so just kind of bolstering our commitment to belonging, to, um, respect and teaching kids how to, um, interact positively with people you might not see that much. Um, or maybe you've never seen before, like if a new kid comes to school. Um, and, and really making sure, especially when the schools are gonna combine, that those kids are prepared to, um, support, uh, and care for each other.
And James Martinson?
Again, uh, kinda like George was saying, I mean, we are one district. There's, there's nobody telling anybody that they can't go to one school or the other. Like I said, I live two miles from, you know, Ashland here. Uh, we drive up to Marengo every day, my two kids. Um, simply because we like the two-day-a-week schedule and Ashland's five half-days for that 4K. And then, you know, we like the teacher, we like the environment, the atmosphere. There's, there's nobody preventing anybody else that wants to, to make that sacrifice for their kids to go over there. And, you know, we, we did, we do like it there. Again, bringing kids who are, are young, they're immature, they're still learning. You know, there are gonna be challenges through life and, and working through those in the middle school level is a part of life.
Thank you, and Kelly Shaggy, can you? Yes, um, does our district have an issue with segregation in regards to Marengo Valley School? And how would you address this issue?
From what I saw when I did get to go to the Marengo or to the board meeting that was at Marengo Valley Elementary, after speaking to a couple of teachers, I saw and heard a lot of them are already networking with Lake Superior Elementary teachers. That many of the families that are very much engaged in Ashland proper. And once you start thinking about Marengo, you have to automatically start thinking about Bad River. And, you know, kids from Bad River, they have no choice, they just go directly to LSC. And so I, I don't think there's an issue with segregation. And I'm thinking about other school districts in rural areas that may have similar or more elementary schools available to help accommodate two communities that are a bit further out and located and there's a demonstrated need for having a different school site altogether. I don't think you should fix what doesn't appear to be broken, uh, so I don't think there's an issue with that.
Oh, this is a specific question for you, um, Kelly Shaggy. Um, what did you see at the school board meeting at Marengo Valley that concerned you, that you referred to in your opening statement?
Yes, I saw a collective group, the board members, and it, it just seemed like everything was beyond a point, uh, finding a creative solution together. That the very thing that we're talking about in regards to bullying and so forth, and then you look at the board and, you know, we had this high expectation for our students and our families and then anyone who attended that board meeting that night would see that everyone feels strongly about our community and our children. But how do we do that collectively together? And I felt that maybe, you know, in that instant, I can't quite remember my opening statement word for word, but I felt that, okay, I definitely wanna be here and I wanna help and I feel that I can help articulate what two different sides are struggling to communicate with one another, towards one another. You can't change people if they, if you can work towards bringing them together.
Thank you. Um, I'll move to a series of questions on improving, um, grades and, um, I'm gonna start with you, James Martinson. How do you think our current administration is working on improving grades and attendance? And do you have any specific plans to improve that?
Well, I was at the board meeting where, again, we, we talked about, you know, standardized testing results. I know, uh, since Superintendent Crater's been here, uh, grades have, or testing results have come up a little bit. I'd like to see that continue, uh, at a, at a pace that's acceptable. I, I know that there's, again, middle school is a very challenging age, I believe our, our test scores were the lowest in middle school. You know, kids are, are learning about themselves, they're, you know, again, underdeveloped brains and, and again, they're just sponges at that age. I, I remember my middle school experience, it was, you know, you had your best friends in middle school or no longer your friends by the end of middle school. Um, and you're still trying to figure out yourself, so, again, I think just having teachers that are there to support their kids and do their best and give it their all, I think Ashland has great teachers, um, right? You know, I owe a lot to the teachers from Ashland, that's where I got my education, but again, just, just continue to, to just take it one day at a time and, and try to, um, help mold these kids into the young adults that we want them to be.
Thank you. Um, our response from you, Jennifer Mabidi. How do you think our current administration is working on improving rates and attendance? Um, do you have plans to improve it?
Yeah, so I think, um, one thing that I know, um, that at least happens in LSC is they give positive reinforcement for attendance. Um, so whether that's for an individual kid or a classroom, um, and I think that's great. I think a way to help, um, improve how attendance is viewed by families would be to work towards providing more outreach, um, to families of students who are not attending as much. Um, rather than always, I feel like it's kind of punitive right now and so kind of trying to make it a more inclusive, supportive, uh, relationship with families. And I think that we can be doing more to support teachers in addressing legging skills that students have. Um, providing more opportunities for intervention for students, um, in whatever subject that is. And, um, making sure that teachers have the support and the training and everything that they need so that they can help the students the most effectively.
And George Fussay?
Uh, well, uh, grades are really kind of one-dimensional measure in the pursuit of excellence. We're really after excellence and the intense learning by our students, which means we need really good and inspired teachers and we need small class sizes. And we can't do that without good funding levels. And our community, if I read the annual report properly, only contributes about 20% of the budget of this school system. And we can do more and we should pass the referendum.
And Teresa Curtis, your response to the question?
I know that currently our district, um, especially in the high school, has started to tie attendance to being able to attend practice for sports. Along with tying grades with being able to then participate in those sports. And I think that's a really great first step in trying to keep at least athletes', uh, grades and attendance up. I agree that there are maybe some more resources that we can look at. Um, when it comes to figuring out barriers that students may have to getting to school, I think that's a large part of attendance. And then for grades, uh, I agree with what Jenny said, there's a lot of support that we can give our teachers, it's really hard when they have a full classroom and many of their students may have IEPs, um, and they need accommodations. And I think that, you know, increasing our special education, uh, program would be really beneficial along with other supports.
Thank you. And finally, Kelly Shaggy?
So looking at attendance, present day, let's say you're a high school student and you're taking math and the teacher is reteaching something that should have been covered the past two days. But they're making sure that they're following through on an IEP, they're making accommodations for students who haven't been present for a while. And so as a student in that class, what are you doing that day? So I think in order to find a creative solution that has already been explored, maybe we have to start rethinking attendance. If you're there, you're present and you're waiting on everyone else, you know, what do you do? Maybe that's when you assign time for students to go elsewhere and work on other things for themselves, you know? How can you get students to want to attend and be at school the entire day? Maybe that's a small way to create an incentive for them to attend when so many of them feel like, why bother? We're not doing anything new right now.
Well, thank you very much. Um, gonna move to a question regarding teachers. And I'm gonna start with you, Jennifer Mabidi. Should teachers be held accountable for learning gaps in students' education? If so, how can we hold them accountable?
Um, that's a big question. Um, I think teachers are obviously an incredibly crucial part, um, in education of their students. However, there are so many factors at play, uh, with learning gaps, there's factors at home. Each child is different as well. Um, there's, if, um, a classroom is too big and like everyone's been talking about when there's all such a range of students, what they need, how they learn. And if teachers do not have the adequate resources or time to reach every single one of those students in the way that they need, then we need to look at, how can we make that happen? So, no, I do not think teachers are solely responsible for that. I think there are so many factors that go into that and we can look at addressing each of those to make sure teachers, students, and families are all successful.
Um, and George Fussay, what would your response be to should teachers be held accountable for learning gaps in students' education? If so, how do we hold them accountable?
Well, I, I do think teachers need to be evaluated and held accountable for their capacity to teach. Held accountable for their failures in teaching. I don't think you can hold them accountable for individual, specific learning gaps. I'm not sure how that would work, I'm not sure how you would even administer it. And I'm not sure how you make a policy out of that. But we're sure teachers need to be eval, be evaluated, held, held accountable for their ability and their ability to teach the students. And if they fail, well, then they have failed and they need to probably move on depending on the circumstance.
And Teresa Curtis?
Um, I agree with, uh, the fact that I don't think that you can hold a teacher accountable for each individual child with a learning gap. Uh, obviously, if there's a trend, then maybe there's a reevaluation that needs to be done on either the teaching or the curriculum. But I think that, um, grades is a really great start for young adults and children to start learning personal accountability. Uh, um, especially if they are, you know, doing things like skipping class or, you know, making up time, I think that's a really great place to start. And I think it's also really important to remember that it's a group effort. It takes parents, it takes teachers, it takes tutors sometimes, and if that's like a necessity, then that's a great resource for the school to offer. And it also takes the kid, uh, to be a part of that.
Thank you. Um, and Kelly Shaggy, how would you answer that question about teachers accountability?
I was just thinking of all of the students that I've taught, the ones that I enjoyed teaching the most did not have the best grades. And they sure did teach me a lot of other things and they were able to make progress in regards to their sense of belonging, their, you name it, social emotional needs. They made a lot of growth. But if it came down to the teacher to be accountable for every student's academic success and failure, we wouldn't have many teachers around. So I think we need to just focus on what the teachers can do, right? Their pedagogy, their skills, what they're bringing to the classroom. And just take into account that each child, you know, it's very one-dimensional, like what George said, just looking at grades alone. And that we need to have a much more holistic way of evaluating our students and our teachers.
Thank you. And finally, you, James Martinson?
I mean, I, I definitely believe that there is some aspects of where teachers should be held accountable as well as administrators be held accountable. You know, and then again, the board accountable as well. Are we providing our teachers the resources to succeed, the proper training? You know, I have, growing up, again, there's numerous teachers in my life and there's a lot of them that have different classroom management styles. Different kids fit certain classroom styles a little bit better. I know my six-year-old is high-energy, he needs somebody that, you know, keep him in check all the time. So again, uh, you know, I think if you pair up the right teachers with the right kids, you're, you're bound to have a much better um, success rate and educational rate or standard. Um, again, there are, there is challenges with kids, need IEPs, my two-year-old is gonna fall into that category. And again, I, I want, you know, the services that are gonna be available for her as well. Um, but I know that she's gonna need a different teacher than my, you know, current six-year-old needs. So again, there is some aspects of accountability. And again, it falls on the administration to try to make sure that we're getting the right teachers with the right kids and the right grade levels.
Thank you very much. I wanna draw our attention to the time. Uh, we usually try to hold these forums to one hour. We have a number of really good questions still outstanding. We do have five candidates. Um, if you would bear with me, I'll just, um, add an additional 10 minutes to our time so we can get more of your questions answered. Um, if you have to leave, um, we totally understand. But, um, it seems like, uh, a lot of good information is coming in.
We, we said we would go until 7:30.
Oh, okay.
But, but we do need to allow at the end for closing statements and remarks.
Okay. Okay, everybody could take a breath here. Um, couple follow-up questions here on, um, and I think these are kind of quick questions, so I'll try to, um, just shoot them quickly here. The next person to start will be George Fussay. And do you think class size is important just to positive student outcomes?
Uh, yeah, I think class size is critical, but you have to be able to afford it. And the more attention a teacher can give to an individual student and treat each student for their individualness or their individuality makes a huge difference for those children. And class size is a really key parameter, so yes.
Okay, and then on to you, um, Teresa Curtis?
Um, yes, I agree with George, I think it's very important. Um, each student learns differently and the smaller number of students that you have in a class, the more individual attention they can receive. And the more individual, individualized learning that they can get.
Okay, thank you. And Kelly Shaggy?
I agree with everything that was just said. And achieving that perfect ratio, it's really hard to get nowadays. And I think we have to take into consideration what can be taught, uh, virtually. A lot of times you'll see a lot of programs that teachers are just, you know, they're there to assist you as you go through units that you learn online. So you really have to think about So you really have to think about what's gonna be the most efficient in supporting students with the face to face with their teachers as they go through their entire educational journey. Sometimes you need a lower teacher to student ratio and in other cases, it's not as critical.
Thank you. And James Martinson.
I agree with almost everything that was said. I mean, class sizes are very important. Again, one of the reasons that we stayed in Ringo and we make the trek is because their classes are a little smaller. And student to teacher ratios are lower. That said, again, I doubled on what I said before too. I mean, you can get by with maybe larger class sizes with the right mix of group of students. You know, if there's less distractions, if there's, you know, kids that, you know, are more, so to say, well behaved. Whereas, and don't need accommodation. Whereas then, on the flip side, if you do have a group of kids that do need special accommodations, things like that. A smaller classroom would be more beneficial to them because you can have the aides all there to help facilitate with that teacher. So it's not overwhelming for them either.
Okay, and finally, Jennifer Mobiti, on class size.
Class size is extremely important for so many reasons. A big one is the more kids you have in your class, the more difficult it is to reach all of them as a teacher. You have to spend a lot more time on sort of administrative things, grading, creating the materials and the whatever. And you don't have as much time to focus on individualized learning. And getting to know your students so that you can teach them and reach them in the best way. That takes time and energy. And if you have a smaller class size, it is so much more realistic to be able to do that. You can have better relationships with families because you would have more time and less families that you would have to interact with. And I think it would really help the kids feel that connection to their teachers if they were able to have that more individualized time with them. And it would give teachers a break as well.
Thank you very much. Another simple question here. And I'll start with you, Teresa Curtis. Is social promotion really good for our students?
Do you know what they mean by social promotion?
I presume they're talking about people who are not making the grade level.
Thank you.
I don't know. This is a question from the audience.
I think that's a very complicated question again. I think that socially it is very hard for students to be left behind. But academically, I'm not sure it is doing them any favors to move them forward if they are not ready. Whether, you know, whether it is academically or emotionally ready to move forward. Because, you know, sometimes that can start at a very young age. I think that's where I'll end.
Kelly Sherry, is social promotion really good for our students?
It depends. At a point, you know, when you, when you start with school. You're learning to read and then you read to learn. And so social promotion can really hurt you depending on when you're putting that into effect. If you're talking about a kindergarten age student who should be with their first grade peers. But is really struggling with literacy and like letter recognition. You know, so many things that are essential for them to be successful in first grade. You don't want to just promote them just because they're gonna be a year behind their class. You really want them to hone in and learn those skills so that they're able to progress further. As opposed to, you know, a high schooler who's not getting all of the credits that they need in order to graduate. Well, they got another year of school that they gotta do. And it's hard to argue against that. Why they should just, or why they shouldn't wait.
James Martinson.
I guess for me, I don't know enough on the subject to speak knowledgeably, something that I have to look into. So, you know, for that, I don't know everything.
Jennifer Mobiti.
Yeah, this is a really complicated issue. And it's one that I saw when I was teaching. I think that when looking at where a student should be and if they're maybe not ready to move on to the next grade. That that would be something that family, admin, teachers, everyone is looking at and deciding that. I think that I saw a lot of just pushing kids through even when they maybe weren't ready. And I think that that will be more detrimental to them later on. Than perhaps looking at how can we help them meet and know the skills that they need and the knowledge that they need to have before they move on to the next grade so that they can be as successful as possible.
And finally, George Busay.
Well, I think the term social promotion is an unfortunate generality, generalization. Because it's a difficult situation with individual children. It's a decision for their parents, working with the teachers. And of course, we try to avoid children being held back by giving them supplemental outside help and education, helping them keep up. You can modify their curriculum by making it not quite as challenging and make it appropriate to their level. But it's an individualized situation to be managed by teachers and parents, administrators, and really not a board policy issue.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple really big ones here and I'm gonna try to move along. These are regarding varsity sports. Varsity sports. Question is, are you aware of problems in the sports area? Coaching negativity, having a goal be to win games? Or just would you prefer having it be that everyone should participate? And we'll start with. Let's see, are we back to you, Kelly? So, okay.
Once you're at the high school level competing, a lot of things are taken into consideration. Namely scholarships to different colleges and universities. You have a lot of potential athletes who are playing on teams that may or may not make it to state. That may be holding you back in a sense, right? And I think over time, you know, we start from a young age and we're learning about teamwork. And we're learning about the sport and skills. And then for some kids, it's not just that anymore. It's a potential for them. So I'm thinking about the question that was just asked. It's, it's something that you can find a compromise. But not everyone will be happy. There's gonna be some parents who really wish that there was a stronger team that didn't have certain students on it. And vice versa, you're just going to have to work with what you have. And I think a lot of parents who want the best for their child, especially in regards to sports. They're, they're very resilient and they find a way to not have that aspect hold their child back from being seen.
James Martinson.
Can you do the question again?
Yeah, are you aware of problems in the sports area in Ashland School District? Coaching negativity? And specifically, should the goal be to win games or just have everyone participate?
So just, yeah, coaching in general, there's always challenges. I was a four year varsity athlete at Ashland, a four year collegiate athlete as well. And sports has always been a huge part of my life. You know, I was taught, respect the coach, listen to the coach. Respect the refs, listen to the refs, you know, they're there. I was a little league coach this year, teaching my six year old how to play baseball. And it was an eye opening experience. It's a lot of fun at that young age. I think sports should be about everybody playing, everybody having fun, learning the game as you advance through that middle school, high school. I believe best, best player should play. You know, we're here to win. I've been a winning guy my whole life. Love winning. I hate losing more than I like winning. And I, I think, you know, those losses that, you know, work hard. You know, has had a major impact in my life and has taught me how to cope with losses later on. And I think that's, that's where we're a little bit missing the boat when we get in the mindset of everybody at a high school level should play.
Thank you. And Jennifer Mobiti.
So first, I'm glad that this question was asked because I did not realize that there was an issue with this. So that's something that I want to look into more and hear more about. But my kind of personal feelings on it is that, kind of like Kelly was saying. Some students, as they're working in varsity sports, that's what they want to do with their life. And it's, it's extremely important to them. It's something that they're gonna pursue after they leave our district. And some kids just wanna play because they enjoy it. And I think both of those things should be supported. And I think that you, by suggesting you don't let certain kids play if they're not as serious about it is more of an exclusion. We should be supporting all the kids if they want to play any sport. And seeing how we could help them reach a better potential if they wanted to. And loss is a part of life. We're not gonna win every game. And that's okay. We should work together and, yeah.
George Busay, your thoughts on varsity sports?
Oh, I know, when you, when you see natural talent, you support it, you promote it, you try to help it grow. But this can be a problem in allocation of resources. Because every child often have the opportunity to participate in athletics to their ability, to the appropriate level. And it's a job of the coaches and staff to find that level for them and to give them the time. It becomes a problem if too much coaching time and attention is given to the talented students. It's true in music, it could be in public speaking, it could be in sports. It's an allocation of the teaching time. You promote talent, you support talent, but you're fair to everybody and you give them a chance.
Thank you. And finally, Teresa Curtis.
I, I do believe it's fair to be equitable in giving students the opportunity to participate in sports. I also think it's fair to have varsity be competitive to get onto the teams. I also strongly believe that this is, even varsity is at a high school level and they are still children. And they should not be expected to live up to the standards of adults. But I would be really curious to know how the students in sports score on their sense of belonging. I think that might be something that affects our teams and affects our, the way that our teams play together.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask one more key question here, I think, and then we're gonna go to the wrap. I'm gonna start with you, James Martinson. What is the board's most important responsibility? It hires a superintendent, it governs through policy and approves the budget. But in your mind, what is the board's most important responsibility?
I believe advocate for the kids. You know, make sure that we are, you know, educating and providing the best education possible within the means that we can. Challenging the district to always be better, continual improvement is huge. And supporting the teachers best of our abilities as well. I know there's a lot of challenges out there. My wife's an educator, a grant writer for the district. And, you know, we see the funding issues. I mean, there's only so much money that, that you can get. And as each, you know, each person tries to get more and secure more, you know, to do all these great things with the district. At the end of the day, there's still a limit and we still have to operate within that budget.
Okay, Jennifer Mobiti.
I think it's very important to keep in mind what the board is capable of and what they can and can't do. I think there's always a kind of sense that the board makes all the decisions or knows all the things. But they have a very specific list of things that they're allowed to influence in that way. But I personally think that it's super important to be accessible. I think board members should be in conversation with the community and the teachers. And when applicable, students to, to really get a full picture of the needs and issues that are facing our community and our district. And I think that is the most crucial way to make informed decisions as a board member rather than being kind of the separate entity. So being in the community for sure.
George Busay, what is the board's most important responsibility?
Well, there are many significant and really important responsibilities, the budget, the kids, their whole deal. But the board are the elected representatives of the community. So the board's most important function is to listen to the community.
And thank you, Teresa Curtis.
I would agree that the most important function is probably being accessible to the community, which includes parents, teachers, and all the children that we are here to support.
Thank you. And Kelly Sherry.
It's important to be accessible. To represent everyone in the community as best as you can. And that's a very huge and respectable task and undertaking. And it can't be done every single time for every single decision. So it's the board member's responsibility to make sure that they try their best. And that they show up for every board meeting, to be present, to be mindful. And to not forget that they're an elected representative for that community. And so, you know, this is a thing that we take for granted in any position. But we have to make sure that our sense of self and identity doesn't get wrapped up in who we are as individuals. And that we're also taking into account that we're representing everyone as best as we can.
Thank you very much. I have a number of other really good questions, but I'm calling it to a close. So it's time now to hear the one minute closing remarks from the candidates. And Teresa, you went first, so now I'm gonna ask Kelly to go first.
Thank you, everyone, me which, for listening. And I just wanna share that if you have any way of reaching me, contacting me, and you have more questions. Please don't hesitate to contact me. I'll try and answer as best as I can and I hope that everything I shared tonight makes sense.
Thank you very much. James Martinson.
Thanks, I appreciate being here. Again, with my closing remarks, I think you got a tough decision on your hands with, you know, five outstanding candidates. And I'll bring a little something different to the table, myself included. You know, I'm here for you guys. I'd be elected by you guys. So do what's in your heart and just get out and vote. If it's not for me, vote for somebody, but I'd encourage you to vote.
Thank you. And Jennifer Mobiti.
I wanna say thank you to the league for hosting us. Thank you to the audience that's here and virtual. And thank you to everyone who submitted questions. I loved getting to hear the wide range of topics that are important to people. And I made a lot of notes of things that I can learn more about. I really want to work to support our families, our communities. I really want to work to support our families, our community, our teachers, and our students. I want to unify the board, and I want to be accessible. I want to hear what everyone has to say, and I want to work to help find solutions. And go vote.
Thank you very much. And George Bouset.
I want to thank my fellow candidates and you all for being here this evening. I should tell you a little bit about my professional history. I currently serve on the National County Board on committees for land conservation, which I have chaired in the past, university extension services, which I currently chair, health and human services, aging and disability resources, and our comprehensive plan, which I also chair. I have worked locally, part-time for regional hospice, county health, and even our school district as a tutor for off-campus students. I was 27 years with Xerox Corporation in corporate finance, and I served as deputy treasurer for European operations, a $4 billion portfolio. Before Xerox, I was at Ford Motor Company in Dearborn, Michigan, before that with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce overseas, before that in New York, running an international internship program for business students during graduate school, administering an on-campus tutoring program for the college students. There is more to tell in the in-betweens, but of course, it all started with paper route. Thank you for your attention, and thanks to the League for sponsoring the board.
Thank you very much. And Teresa Curtis.
I'm going to reiterate, thank you, everyone, for your questions and for coming. My main hope in running for the school board is to try to do best for our community's kids, and I'm sure that's the hope of everyone running. I want to also say again that I believe it's important for our community to be involved in our local schools in any form, and I hope we all can continue to do that, whether elected or not.
Thank you very much. Now, you have all heard from the candidates for the at-large school board position. The primary election is February 18th. You'll be selecting one of the five candidates. The two most votes, the two with the most votes will be on the April 1 ballot, along with two candidates for the apportioned seat. The League of Women Voters urges you to vote. Thank you to the audience for your wonderful questions, and to all these stellar candidates. It's been a really interesting evening. We're grateful that we get to hear from each other. Thank you.